Good evening, everybody. We've got the Agenda Review Session for City Council Meeting Wednesday, October 7, 2015. We have ordinances on Second Reading, 501. Orders to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City New Brunswick Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.44, Uniform Fire Safety Act Enforcement. Ordnances on Second Reading, I mean on First Reading, so. We have 501. Orders to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City New Brunswick Title VIII, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-10-20, Handicap Parking, Schedule 40, Parking Spaces for Handicap Persons, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons. Add one parking space for handicap persons at 20 James Street. Add three parking zones for handicap persons at 161 Lee Avenue, 203 Talbot Street, and 150 Handy Street. 502. Orders to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City New Brunswick Title VIII, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10, Dot 16, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Parking on Lawn Areas Prohibited. Resolutions, 501, Approve Amendment, Agenda Amendments. 502, Approve Payrolls, 9/5/15, 9/18/15, 9/19/15, 10/2/15. 2015 Management Retroactive Payroll. 503, Authorize Refund for Redeemed Tax Sale Certificates. 504 is called as unnecessary at the request of the City Clerk. 505, Approve Off-Premise Raffle Merchandise at 75 Barrett Street, Moses County Administration Building, for Earth Share New Jersey Corporation, dated December 10, 2015. 506, Approve Execution of Joint Funding Agreement with the United States Department of the Interior, U.S. Geological Survey for the New Jersey Water Science and Water Resources Investigations Not to Exceed 16,900 Non-Pro Tunk. 507, Authorize Mayor and City Clerk to签订 a Site Access Agreement with Amex Foster Wheeler Environment and Infrastructure Incorporated for Environmental Investigation and Testing, Block 242, Block 10203, 400 Jersey Avenue. 508, Approve Request for Solicitation of Funds requested by Rutgers University Dance Marathon, Dance Marathon to benefit Embrace Case Foundation. Dates are October 16, 17, 18, 2015, November 20, 21, 22, 2015, December 4th, 5th, 6th, 2015. Times are 9:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Locations, George and Albany Streets, Eastian Avenue, Somerset Street, George and Barrett Streets, George and Church Street, Eastern Avenue and Applewood Street, Rogers Lane, Dudley Road, George Street and Commercial Avenue, George Street and Nickel Avenue, and Eastern Avenue and Landy Lane. 509, Approve Off-Premise Raffle Casino Night at 126 College Avenue, Rutgers University, for Children's Specialized Hospital Foundation Incorporated, dated December 4, 2015. 510, Approve Award Contract with Manhattan Maintenance Company Incorporated for Cleaning of Lots. Term is 24-month period commencing October 8, 2015, ending October 7, 2017. Specification Number 455-15P, not to exceed 25,350. 511, Approve Amendment Resolution R. 081-558, Pay additional legal fees in amount 2,142 to Benedictive Alvin for Police Reproportant X. New, in the matter of Victor Rodriguez, President of New Brunswick, from 12/9/71 to 15/113. 512, Approve Authorization to Rebid, requested by Senior Citizen Resource Center for Food and Products, with Senior Center, Resource Center. Rebid specification 453-15PR. 513, Approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion, U.S. Bureau of Justice Assistance, for FY2015 Bulletproof Fest Partnership Grant, Amount is $14,801,14. 514, Approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion, with U.S. Department of Justice, Bureau of Justice Assistance, for FY2015 Edward Byrne Ruined Justice Assistance Grant, Amount is $84,504. 515, Approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion, U.S. Department Housing and Urban Development, for Home Grant, M15-MC340227, Amount is 357,78. 516, Approve Chapter 159 Budget Insertion, County Museum of Culture and Heritage Commission, for History Grant, Amount is $2,600. 517, Approve Award Contract with Language Line Services Incorporated for Translation Services for the Police Department, Term is 12-month period commencing September 18, 2015, and ending September 17, 2016. Specification Number 456, 15RFP, Not to Exceed 10,000 Non-Pro Tunk. 518, Approve Amendment Resolution R. 091542, Reason, Additional Amount of 2,630,250 to cover the cost for traffic control, with Fisher Contract Incorporated for million of various city streets for the Department of Public Works, Not to Exceed 2,630,250. Approve this amendment will not constitute an increase of 20 percent of more than the original contract. 519, Approve Amendment Resolution R. 041-521, Reason, Pay invoice for 2014, is now $4,091, with Longville Electrical Mechanic Incorporated for Sanitary Sewer Pump Station, Not to Exceed $4,091. Approve this change order will not constitute an increase of 20 percent of more of the original contract. Approve Request for Solicitation of Funds, 520, requested by New Brunswick Athletic Association, Pay for Annual Operating Expenses, Dates, October 13, I'm sorry, October 3, Not Pro Tunk, October 10, 17, 24, 2015. Times are 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Location, Corner of Handy Street and Jersey Avenue. 521, Approve Award Contract with Joe May Contract Incorporated for Plum Street, Sanitary Sewer and Roadway Improvement, Specification Number 886-15, Not to Exceed 245,920. 522, Approve Amendment of Resolution R. 061-532, Change Order Number One Credit, Guarding State Highway Products for 2015 Furnish and Deliver Regularity Signs, Specification Number 888-15, Credit Amount $1,012672. Approve this change order will not constitute an increase of 20 percent of more of the original contract. 523, Approve Release of Site Performance Pop, Amount $837,500, to Michael Reese Company, for New Brunswick Geological Seminary, Seventeen Seminary Place, Blocks 94, Blocks 1.02, 5.01. 524, Approve Release of Inspection Fees in Amount $7,122,44, to St. Peters University Hospital for Emergency Room Reconfineration, 254 Eastern Avenue, Block 449, 1.01. 525, Approve Request for Solicitation of Funds, requested by Rutgers University Habitat for Humanity Campus Chapter, Dates, October 9, 10, 11, 12, 2015, Times, 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. Locations, George Street and Albany Street, George Street and Church Street, George Street and Barrett Street. 526, Approve Relaxation of City Doors Order, requested by Public Service Selecting and Gas Company, Reason, Dig Test Pit for New Manhole on Johnson Drive near George Street, Date, Tuesday, October 13, 2015, Ultimate Dates, Wednesday, October 14, 2015, Tuesday, October 20, 2015, and Wednesday, October 21, 2015, Times, 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 a.m. 527, Authorize Mayor and City Clerk to Execute Grant Water Utility, with State and New Jersey Office of Homeland Security and Preparedness, for Water Treatment Target Hardening, Award Amount $150,000. 528, Approve Amendment Resolution R. 081151, Reason, Pay prior year invoice in the amount of $110.95, with Marlin Leasing Corporation doing business as Marlin Business Bank, for Conica Milota Biz Hub 223, copier for the Municipal Prosecutor's Office, Not to Exceed $110.95. Approve this change order will not constitute an increase of 20 percent more of the original contract. 529, Approve Request for Annual Holiday Horse-Drawn Carriage Ride for 2015, requested by New Brunswick City Market for free horse-drawn carriage ride in downtown New Brunswick, Date, Friday, December 18, Saturday, December 19, and Sunday, December 20, 2015. Time is 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 530, Approve Request for Street Closure in Use of Myung Square, requested by New Brunswick City Market, Street Closure Location, Livingston Avenue, through Georgia New Streets on Theater Side, for Holiday Tree Lane, Showmobile, Chili Cookoff, and Performers, Date, Friday, December 4, 2015, Time, 3:00 p.m. to 8:30 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 531, Approve Request for Street Closure, requested by Our Lady of Mount Carmel Church, Location, beginning at 75 Morris Street, traveling on Livingston Avenue, Wellington Street, Wood Street, Townsend Street, Livingston Avenue, George Street, ending at 75 Morris Street, for Religious Procession of Lord of the Miracles from Peru, Date, Sunday, November 1, 2015, Time, 11:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Police Extra Duty. 532, Approve Request for Street Closure, requested by Sedan Street Reform Church.
Mr. Council President, if I could just...
I'm on a roll.
That one, from my understanding, that event never occurred due to being called off because of the intended hurricane, it never happened, so we could pull that one out of our desk, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. 532, Approve, is that the one I called?
532.
Okay. 533, Approve Application Execution of Grant Agreements, 2016 Transportation Trust Fund Program, New Jersey Department of Transportation, for George Kilmer Avenue Roadway Improvements from Patterson Street to Handy Street, Project ID Number MA-2016, New Brunswick City, 00356. 534, Authorize Application Execution of Grant Agreement, 2016 Transportation Trust Fund Program, New Jersey Department of Transportation, for Nickel Avenue Road Improvements from George Street to Sanford Street, Project ID Number MA-2016, New Brunswick City, 00355. 535, Approve Amendment Resolution R. 081-568, Change Order Number Three, with Lucas Brothers Incorporated, Sedan Street Roadway Improvements, Phase Two, Patterson Street, George Kilmer Avenue, and Livingston Avenue to Commercial Avenue, Classification Number 44-14, in Mount 1725575. Approve this change order will not constitute an increase of 20 percent of more of the original 536, Approve Amendment Resolution R. 051-576, Change Order Number Two-P, Lovada Incorporated, Reps. Avenue Fire Museum and Community Center, Amount is 4,250. Approve this change order will not constitute an increase of 20 percent more of the original contract. 537, Approve Payment for Emergency Procurement of Public Property for Repair Elevator and City Law Building, Furnish and Install New CLC Board, Memory Board, with Clifton Elevator Service Incorporated, Not to Exceed 2,500, Purpose Order D-82482. 538, Authorize Purchase by Police Department Under State Contract A-83921/T-0109, for Micro Technologies Incorporated for Maintenance Agreement Supporting Nice for Nice Equipment, Term 12-month, monthly period commencing April 1, 2015, and ending March 31, 2016, Not to Exceed $10,020 Non-Pro Tunk. 539, Authorize Purchase by Police Department Under State Contract A-83925/T-0109, from Carousel Industries of North America Incorporated, for Maintenance Agreement, 9/11 System Law-Inclusive Maintenance, Airbus Cassadian, Term Commencing October 1, 2015, and Ending November 30, 2015, Not to Exceed $7,24261 Non-Pro Tunk. 540, Authorize Purchase by Library Under State Contract A-89849, Swapware License and Related Services/M-0003, from CDW Government Incorporated for Swapware, Not to Exceed $7,9878. 541, Approve Authorization to Advertise, for Commercial Avenue Drainage, Concrete, and Pavement Period, Specification Number 897-15. 542, Approve Award Contract with Yocanis and White Incorporated for Professional Land Servicing and Property Surveying Services for the new Fire Headquarters, Specification Number 889-C15RFP, Not to Exceed $8,900. 153, Approve Award Contract with Man's Woodward Series Incorporated for Architectural Designs for the new Fire Headquarters, Specification Number 889-15RFP, Not to Exceed $565,590. 544, Authorize Purchase by Police Department of Public Works under the New Jersey, Approve Code Up, 65MCESSCCPS, Middlesex Regional Educational Service Commission, Cooperative Pricing System from Jesco Incorporated, for One John Beer Backhoe Loader, Not to Exceed 10933365. 545, Approve Indemnity Trust Agreement with the Middlesex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund, Term, January 1, 2016, and December 30, 2018, Free Year. 546, Mycross Mayor and City Clerk to Execute Contract Extension, Free Year, with PBA 23 and 23A, Term 2018, 2021. 547, Approve Off-Premise Raffle Merchandise at 222 Livingston Avenue for Ants and the Memorial Temple, Date, December 21, 24, 2015.
That's correct, one typo, item 46, that is a four-year extension with the PBA contract, not three-year.
Four-year, you said?
Yes. 18, 19, 20, and 21.
Okay. Uh... Hold on, please.
Councilmember Anderson?
Here.
Councilmember Escobar?
Here.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Here.
Councilmember Garladi?
President...
Council President Egan?
Here. Please be advised that the notice requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act have been complied with and satisfied, and that the annual notice, which gives sufficient notice of the time and place and conduct of all public meetings of the municipal county of New Brunswick, has been filed with the City Clerk, has replaced an inappropriate bulletin board in the lobby of City Hall in Brunswick, New Jersey, and has been transmitted to the official newspaper of the City of New Brunswick, namely, The Home News Tribune. Please stand before the meeting.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his rule, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence for our men and women serving in our armed forces, and for our men and women who have served in our armed forces and have lost their lives in battle. Thank you. You have minutes from September 2, 2015, can I get a few minutes for the minutes?
Second. Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. Ordnance about Second Reading, 501. Orders to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City New Brunswick Title VIII, Health and Safety, Chapter 8.44, Uniform Fire Safety Act Enforcement. Would anybody from the public like to speak on this particular ordinance? Yes.
Good evening, he is Council President, my name is the Council, my name is Charles Cradville, I'm from New Brunswick. First off, what is the purpose of the ordinance?
Mr. Shammy?
Oh, he said inspection fees, but as far as the technical aspects of it, I think Mr. Quagliata is here probably answering.
Deere, Mr. Quagliata, could you please tell us?
This ordinance people allow inspections, and some buildings pay fees to the state, some building inspection requirements of those that fall under state. We do inspections anyway, but we don't get any fees, or else we feel that we need to set up a fee schedule, so when we do the inspections, we can get compensated for what we're doing.
So presently, there's no fee, and this would be implementing fees?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay, I'm just, I'm sorry, I didn't quite catch, what are the circumstances? This is when a building is subject to state regulation?
There are certain buildings that the state requires that we do an inspection on every year, okay, and they pay a fee to the state, and we give money back to the state for doing those inspections. If they don't fall into that criteria, then they don't pay a fee to the state, but we still do inspections on them, so we don't charge them, so we feel that we need to charge them now.
Okay. And approximately how many buildings?
Well, given your... You have multiple dwellings, and you have non-life hazards, which could be any mom-and-pop store up to any small businesses that don't meet the requirements out in industrial fields, they don't, some of the buildings don't have the square footage that meets the state requirements, so we're talking lots of buildings.
Hundreds?
Possibly.
Okay. And is there a prediction of how much funds will be raised on this new fee?
Yeah, I can't guess that much.
Okay. I guess I'd want to just call into question the priorities here. This seems like an issue that's not, you know, urgently affecting anyone, the inspections are being done, it's just an issue of, you know, the city charging 50, or 100, or 200, or 400, or 600 dollars, and the city is pushing through with this ordinance, you passed it on first reading, it's about to pass on second reading, I don't think I heard anybody oppose it, but there is a campaign that people really want you to pass a, an ordinance for paid sick leave, and I believe a couple months ago, you had a meeting, and you promised you to do that within a couple of months, and so we're at about that time, and I noticed, you know, that that ordinance is not even on first reading yet. Can I get an update on the important ordinance that the people really want you to pass?
Not at this time, sir, we're working on this ordinance right here, so let's continue with that, do you have any more questions?
Okay, I just want to, I just want to say, it looks bad that you're, you know, passing a fee increase before you're doing the work that the people sent you here to do, and I think you should, you know, make sure that you get that ordinance introduced at your next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the ordinance? Seeing none?
Move the ordinance.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes, 501. The ordinance is on, these are on first reading. Orders to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City New Brunswick Title VIII, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-20, Handicap Parking, Schedule 40, Parking Spaces for Handicap Persons, Schedule 39, Parking Zones for Handicap Persons, and one parking space for handicap persons at 20 James Street. Add three parking zones for handicap persons at 161 Lee Avenue, 203 Talbot Street, and 150 Handy Street.
Move the ordinance setting down October 21, for public hearing same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
502. In Orders to amend and supplement to revise general orders of the City New Brunswick Title VIII, Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10-16, Stopping, Standing, or Parking, Parking on Lawn, Lawn Areas Prohibited.
Move the ordinance setting down October 21, for public hearing same day to be advertised.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garladi?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We now have resolutions, we have resolutions 501 to 547, and we are holding 504, holding 504, and we're also holding the one that, Mr. Shammy, 32. Would anybody from the public like to speak on these particular resolutions this evening? Dame in address, please, sir.
Good evening, my name is Dan, I am a broker student. First resolution, I wanted to just ask about, what is 506?
506.
So can you just tell me?
Who can speak on, Professor Locken?
This is an annual agreement we have with the U.S. Geological Survey, they have gauges on the Western Mill Dam, and they measure the waterfall coming over the dam, they collect the data, apparently they transmit it back to a satellite, but this is an annual agreement we've had with them for a long time, we pay them 16,900 a year.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. Okay, so the work has been ongoing for a while? Yes. Okay. And then regarding the next ordinance, the resolution is 523.
I'm sorry, sorry, Dan. 523?
523, yes.
That, sir, is when people do work in the City New Brunswick, Michael Reese, they built the seminary place over there on Seminary and College Avenue, the works, they have to put up a bomb for their work, so it's all clean, and everything's inspected by the city when it's done. When it's all done, they ask for the money that's on the container from the City New Brunswick, to get the money back, and that's what that was.
Okay.
Am I saying that right?
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Anybody else on the resolutions this evening? On the resolutions?
Yes. Good evening once again, Charles Cradville, New Brunswick. I just wanted to ask if it's about the same one, 506, is the Geological Survey agreement?
Yes.
What are we paying for, is the city's paying?
Mr. Locken?
Yes, the city is paying for the U.S. Geological Service having gauges on our property, measuring water flow over the dam, transmitting it to a satellite, and then sharing it with the website, dealing with water, fall, rainfall, those types of things. A little odd, I would agree, that we are responsible for paying for this, but we have for years, and that is the, that is the agreement with the federal government.
Thank you.
Okay, the city get anything out of it?
Information.
Just the info, I guess it's a great deal of information.
The very next item, 400 Jersey Avenue, I've asked in the past, I just want to be absolutely certain, is it safe for people to be working at 400 Jersey Avenue?
What number are you talking about, sir?
The very next item is 507, I'm sorry, the Environmental Investigation and Testing at Ford, that's the DPW headquarters, so.
What's the question? What's the question?
Is it safe for people to be working there, what's under investigation?
Well, we've been asked to be able to go on to that particular property to conduct some testing, and this is an actual access agreement, which the mayor and city clerk have to execute with the contract in order to go on to the property to be tested. I believe it's in conjunction with some work that's going on in the area that we're not necessarily doing, but, I don't know if the engineer can help, oh, Mr. Valengue's here.
No, he's plenty, I'm sorry. Tom Lenny is assistant city engineer. This specific access agreement is germane to New Jersey Transit's plans to expand a train storage facility. Historically, any railroad site in the country, it automatically is an area of concern, and so it triggers a natural environmental investigation, so that's the response.
Thank you kindly. 511, I want to first thank Mr. Shammy for sending me a letter, I received, regarding the cases where the police directors have defended, I was surprised, the Deloche matter is not one of them, I just wanted to clarify, he's, why isn't that the police director, was he not named in the litigation?
Not named pursuant.
Okay, so we were both confused about that, okay. Thank you, I noticed that the number was five cases that the police director is, you know, having taxpayers pay for his defense. 521, Plum Street Sanitary Sewer, what is the scope of this work, is it going to be all of Plum Street?
Sir, what do you think, do you know what's happening, please? Yes. The sewer mains along Plum Street in two sections is very old and antiquated, is in bad condition. When the specialized hospital was installed, and also the Institute for Child Health, sections of that were redone, this is the completion to replace, and then we're also going to, as a part of that, add some bump outs, or what we call elephant ears, to try to slow the traffic down and make pedestrian crossings safer for folks coming out of the parking deck.
Terrific, glad to hear it about that. The, just on the performance bond, 523, that's the largest I've ever seen, is that, is that abnormally high, $837,000 performance bond?
It's based on the price of the, on the cost of the job, I would think, on the cost of the project. Of course, I'm sure there's been larger ones.
I imagine, right? Okay. Okay, I need to ask about 527, the water treatment target hardening, is, what is this hundred fifty thousand dollars?
What did the record here, sir?
Yes.
Can you speak on that, sir, please?
Yes, this was a grant that was applied for, I believe, when Frank Marashia was here, in coordination with our security team that we have down there. It's a great opportunity for us to upgrade the security system, enhance cameras, and other surveillance issues with the plan.
Thank you.
Sounds good. The, I guess the city hall elevator, is that fixed for good, and when are you going to fix the rest of city hall?
Well, Mr. Cradville, nothing's ever fixed for good, especially repairs of buildings and things like that, but I believe that's why we had to move our meeting, last meeting was that, for that reason.
That's correct. And is there any plan to fix the roof here?
There is a plan. Mr. Locken, I think that's working on it, would you like to speak on it, Mr. Locken?
Uh, yeah, we entered, we executed a engineering contract a couple of months ago, they're working on construction drawings and bid documents to, first waterproof the outer envelope of this building, and all of its problems on the exterior. Once we are convinced that the envelope is waterproof, we'll spend more money inside here.
Very good.
And was there a timeframe for when they'll be done with their work, just engineering?
Time frame, sir?
The, I believe their engineering work will be done sufficiently for us to put the matter out to bid this winter, and to start the exterior renovations in the spring.
Thank you kindly. Number 41, Commercial Avenue Drainage, Concrete, and Pavement, can you tell me what, what part of Commercial Avenue, and what improvement specifically?
Mr. Deloche, I may speak to that. Commercial Avenue specifically from Sanford Street to the terminal, the Hubble Cemetery, where's no existing stormwater system in place there at all, there are, at some intersections, we have some ponding effect, so primarily it's going to install new storm sewer, and then once that's done, we're going to improve roadway, and we'll handicap ramps and pumps.
Great. The new fire headquarters, this is 42 and 43, I'm very interested to learn about what the plan is for a new headquarters, if there's a, you know, timeframe on it, or if you have an idea of what properties of ours you want to, you want to purchase to expand the footprint.
Mr. Locken?
I guess we're under rules, I'd like to speak... I'd say, I guess we're under rules, would like to speak to it.
Okay. What's the question?
The, uh, the fire headquarters, what, where do you, where are you looking to buy properties to expand it? And, uh, you know, what is the timeframe for the new fire headquarters?
There is not a timeframe set up to finish the fire quarters, but we have looked at all the parcels in the city for a possible fire quarter.
So, am I correct to assume it's going to be, it's going to replace the existing headquarters?
That's correct.
Okay, and, and so, does that mean the city is looking to purchase properties on Joyce Kilmer, Seaman, uh, maybe Sedam Street? Or, or does it mean they've already purchased?
What's your question, sir?
Have, have you guys already purchased properties in addition to the one you already own there? Or are you looking to purchase properties?
Cause I have, I don't know, I don't believe so, I don't really have to...
That's a site that the city has been looking at. Uh, again, we've looked at all the properties in that area in the city, based on location, size, access, uh, so that, that is one of the sites, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, so Joyce Kilmer, Sedam, and Seaman, you're looking to buy people's properties there and expand the fire?
That, that would be the way to do it, Mr. Crabbell, yes.
Okay, um, this is, uh, how much bigger is the fire headquarters going to be?
Do we have an approximate size, sir, director, anybody know from the initial drawings on how big it's going to be?
Uh, the, the, uh, concept plan is that the new, uh, headquarters would be something on approximately thirty thousand square feet. It's not just going to house, um, the fire department, it's going to house other departments as well.
Okay.
Interesting, and, uh, so the existing structure's eighty-nine years old. Is it safe to be parking the fire engines there? It's my understanding...
Yes, we did some work there just recently, I know we shored up the, uh, basement there with some steelwork to make it safe, I mean, it's been inspected. Uh, but you're right, it's, it's in a very old building, it's outdated, uh, uh, the, the firemen, especially headquarters, uh, could use some more room. It makes sense, if they're going to build a building this size, maybe we can have some, uh, other departments upstairs or something like that. I guess that, I believe that's the concept.
Okay, and so, so there's been structural work to make sure it's okay to park the vehicles there now?
Yes, yes.
I'll move on to four, forty-five is the agreement with the MCM JIF. Can somebody speak to this agreement and, uh...
Which number is that?
Uh, the, uh, forty-five, the Millsex County Municipal Joint Insurance Fund. I want to ask if this has been a good financial, uh, you know, decision for the city to be a part of this fund? And if anybody has any figures on how much money we've saved by being a part of it?
Well, I don't think anybody would have that this evening, but, uh, who can comment on the JIF fund, uh, as far as if it's feasible and good for the city of New Brunswick?
Well, what's before you is a three-year renewal. I, I would tell you that I believe it is advantageous for us to get our insurance through this joint insurance fund. Most towns, um, join a pool of other towns, there's a number of joint insurance funds. This one, I think, has been, um, beneficial to us since we were a founding member. Um, I don't know what we've saved if we had placed the insurance in the, uh, the marketplace. Um, but, um, I think they've been, um, helpful to us with all of our insurance issues, and have been helpful to us in terms of trying to, um, manage our, um, exposures. Um, our annual premium with them is roughly two point one million dollars. About three years ago, we shopped the business with other, um, joint insurance funds and found that the JIF was, um, still a, um, preferable place for us to be. So tonight, we're proposing to you that, uh, we enter into a new three-year agreement, thank you.
Thank you.
Crabbell, thank you for the thorough answer. I want to ask, has anybody done any, uh, research into, uh, how New Brunswick compares with the other members of the fund? In terms of, uh, the costs incurred from, uh, certain types of liabilities, certain types of lawsuits that, that the city settles or has legal costs for?
Mr. Locken?
The, um, the fund shares with its members at its meetings, um, what everyone's loss ratio is by different insurance category, whether it's property, auto, um, public official liability. Um, and everyone is, um, all over the board in terms of what their, um, loss ratio looks like. We are the, I, I will tell you this, we are the, the members of the fund, we are the, assess the, the highest premium, um, but we have also the, um, the largest payrolls, the, uh, I think that property, um, coverage is probably more significant than most.
Thank you.
Okay, so...
Anything else?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, did you ask the PBA if he knows the loss ratio for the city of New Brunswick? Or any of those loss ratios? And where, where rates?
Do you know the loss ratios?
I do not.
He doesn't know that, not at this time, no.
Okay, um, the last item I want to ask you about is forty-six, the, uh, apparently the contract extension for the police union, can you give me the details on what, uh, is included in that?
Mr. Locken?
I can, uh, four-year renewal, not a renewal extension, excuse me. Um, the PBA will earn wage increases, um, in twenty eighteen, uh, at a value of one and a half percent, uh, two percent in twenty nineteen, one and a half percent in twenty twenty, and, uh, two percent in twenty twenty-one. Um, in addition, the PBA is going to, uh, accept a major change in the prescription benefit that we, uh, offer them. Um, that is going to save the city twenty-three thousand dollars in November and December of this year, and will save us a hundred and seven, a hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars a year and every year after, uh, under the agreement. Uh, the PBA is going to, um, commit to contributing towards their health benefits in accordance with Chapter Seventy-Eight, even if, even if Chapter Seventy-Eight is repealed. Um, we are also eliminating the pay for recruits while they're in the academy for twenty-one weeks. We're, we're reducing it to minimum wage, um, and at the moment, this year, I think minimum wage is eight dollars and thirty-eight cents per hour. As such, we're saving eleven thousand dollars for each recruit over a twenty-one week period.
And this, and this is done because recruits start out and then don't finish, or whatever?
Um, actually, it was an offer by the PBA, uh, to, uh, make it easier for us to, uh, replace officers.
What did you say the last year was, I didn't hear about it, was it two and a half?
Wages.
Yeah, one and a half, two percent, one and a half, and what was the last one?
Two.
Just two.
And there's a re-opener that's been negotiated specifically for the Cadillac tax in twenty eighteen, should that, um, still be a, uh, a viable tax.
Thank you.
The, the Cadillac tax is, uh, if you don't know, is part of the Affordable Care Act, which is going to tax health benefit plans that the federal government deems as being too rich.
Yes, sir. Mr. Crabbell, anything else, sir, on the resolutions, sir?
Sure, uh, so, I just, is it a three-year deal or a four-year deal?
Four-year deal.
Four-year, okay, it says three years on the agenda.
Were you here when we said, did we change that?
No, I, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, he made a typo, it's weird.
Okay, uh, and I guess the only other question I've asked is how does this compare with, uh, the other unions that the city does, uh, work with? Can the other unions expect similar raises, uh, over these same years?
Uh, I, I would...
Assuming, um...
Go ahead, Mr. Locken.
Well, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Um, everyone has different contracts, uh, everyone accepts different, um, um, issues. Uh, the other unions may be, uh, pressing for some change in their contract in some other area, but we have been consistent about, uh, the desire to get the prescription changes made for every union. Management has already accepted these, uh, changes. We're negotiating the same kinds of, um, we call them planned decrements with the NEA, and we are negotiating the same decrements with the FMBA. Um, it'd be, uh, wrong for me to predict what their wages will look like, but we try to be fair and consistent to every labor unit in the organization.
Well, I would say it's a, it's always good to have somebody settle first, because you could use that as a bargaining tool for somebody else, you know, to say what they got there.
There was a special payroll on this agenda for management, you read that earlier on. Uh, management did get one and a half percent this year, but it was only retroactive to July first, but not retroactive to July first.
Thank you.
So in that regard, management is receiving a, uh, inferior raise compared to the people, but, um, the other two, the other two contracts are, uh, under negotiation right now.
Thank you, Mr. Locken.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else have the resolutions? Seeing none?
Move the resolution.
Second.
Councilmember Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Escobar?
Yes.
Council Vice President Fleming?
Yes.
Councilmember Garlotti?
Aye.
Council President Egan?
Yes. We'll now move to the public portion of the meeting. Anybody who'd like to address the council? If you have, uh, come up to the microphone, name and address, please, you have five minutes. Five-minute rule to address the council. Please come up to the microphone.
Yes, sir, my name is... Yes, I would you do. Uh, my name is Robert Solano from One Fifty Fourth Street. I have been organized youth adult penal soccer program for the last one, three years. Uh, the soccer program is about twenty-five weekends during the month of March to October, uh, of every single year. Our soccer program is of free taxpayer expenses, which it means that we don't ask the city or any governmental office or any of the business to sponsor our soccer program. We come up with our own money from concession stands and from the car washes we do. I am here tonight not to ask you for any money. I'm here tonight not to, not to override the protocols of regulation. I'm here tonight to ask you for your sympathy and support. To please extend the hours for the use of the Memorial Stadium Soccer Field from eight AM to nine PM, instead of just happening until three PM. I'm willing to pay overtime or any fees that may require to make this happen. Our championship game will be on October eleventh, eighteen twenty-fifth this month, and a makeup game will be Saturday for the reigning last weekend, October eleventh. City council, you had the decision in your room tonight. Please do not turn your head down on us. Help us to do the right thing for our community in New Brunswick. We are a large soccer program community in our town. We are so proud of it.
Thank you.
Danielle Moore from One Eight Eight Walker Street?
Evening.
Uh, I'm, I'm here to ask you, are you going to extend the time for the soccer players? Are you going to extend the time for what he's asking for up until nine o'clock?
I don't, I don't, I don't know that answer, um, what's, what's the story with the...
He's going to be willing to pay anything.
Our, um, current approval for Mr. Solano's soccer program is from eight AM to four PM, which are the hours that our, um, employee on Sunday works, and we are still very comfortable with that allotment of eight hours. Um, we had a meeting with Mr. Solano a week and a half ago. We told him we were only going to give him eight-hour approvals for the brand-new field, which does not need to be, uh, overworked already. Um, he agreed with the eight hours, he was not happy with the eight hours. He asked us to consider, um, uh, an extension, um, and after a week and a half, there's a major argument already about, uh, the demand for extended hours. This facility was built for the high school athletic programs, everyone else comes second, and we are comfortable with the, um, eight-hour approval we are giving him on Sundays for a for-profit soccer program.
So the answer is, the answer is not this time?
So even if he pays, like you said, even if he pays for the work, overtime for the workers, is that, can that happen?
I, we're, we're comfortable with the approval we've already negotiated with him.
Well, to help kids stay off the street? So why can't the city look in, look into it? It's something for the children?
Well, it's, it's adult lives, and we have looked into it.
We, and we have looked into it, and, uh, they're comfortable with the eight hours at this time. Uh, this is a, this is a for-profit soccer league, are you aware of that, man?
Yes, I, I know about it, it's a team.
Okay. Anything else?
Okay, oh yes, I'll get to, to my list, okay. Uh, well, first, I would, uh, give a nice compliment to the firemen of the New Brunswick City, where, wow, uh, that they had the courage to wear pink shirts. Wow, everyone's been noticing it in, in the neighborhood, so I, I'd like to say, give you a compliment, you know, you can go see men in pink shirts, right? For the virus cancer, everyone's been noticing, noticing you. Okay, my next thing is, uh, for the light on Joyce Kilmer and Delavan, the flashers is out to cross Joyce Kilmer Avenue.
What, what's the addresses?
Joyce Kilmer and Delavan, the flashlight, we push the button and then signal people to walk across.
Okay.
Okay, and then I'm asking you, what's going on on Howard Street and Railroad Avenue?
Mr. Valenti?
Yes, we are, um, improving, there's a existing sanitary, uh, pump station there that is forty-plus years old, and is the subject of, uh, a lot of ongoing and prolonged maintenance. We're actually replacing the structure, we're building a whole new pump station.
So is that going to help with the flooding down there?
This has nothing to do with, the storm work is strictly taking the sanitary effluent out of the buildings and pumping into an area where they go into the drainage system. It has nothing to do with the storm sewer.
Okay, I understand. Okay, now, my, my biggest thing, that's why I mentioned to you about, uh, Livingston Avenue and Delavan Street. Uh, is there something that the council or the police department sees that what makes this area very dangerous compared to a lot of other places with schools?
Is there something that they see?
Yes, do you, do you realize why this location, I, I'm really showing so much, trying to give you the attention due to where, what, the one from city council or the police department really comes out to really sit on the corner and see what goes on?
Excuse me, I was there.
Well, okay, excuse, excuse me, well, yeah, yeah, uh, that was the day with the, I think, the water name, right?
I came out, yeah, my dentist was just right by there, so...
Well, well, okay, I, I, I still think it needs more attention, because one reason that you notice why this, this location needs so much attention due to where this, I believe this is the only area in New Brunswick where you have two elementary schools at the same location, where it's putting too much stress on only two crossing guards. Wow, I pray that he, that, I, I forget his name, the older man that's on the corner there, wow, he doesn't have a heart attack, due to where it's so, getting to be so dangerous there, due to where you have to cross four ways, and you only have two, two crossing guards. Where, sure, I put you some pictures down to really show you example how he really has to run from crossing Livingston Avenue, then run to cross the kids on Delavan, and, and back and forth. So like I was asking you before, I realized that you took the cones to block off Comstock Street, so to stop the cars from coming through there so much, due to where it's a bus zone. Now, I'm wondering if somehow you can do the same thing with Delavan Street, or say no left turn during school hours? Because, I mean, like I said, I have pictures to show how many ways the cars are going, and like I said, these two crossing guards, they cannot keep up with every zone where, like I told you before, you see too many close calls. So is it possible you can put cones there just like you do on Comstock Street?
We'll have somebody take a look at it, maybe it's possible, I'm, uh, well, who is responsible for the, for, who put the cones there?
Well, that was with, with, uh, the school and, I believe, security or the police department, where they came with an agreement.
Okay, we'll, we'll have somebody take a look at it.
Because like I said, I, I have some pictures here with the main to show you how, like I said, hard, how cro, how hard it is to cross, where he's crossing someone this way, and then what he's running to cross someone this way. And if you would like, if nobody doesn't have the time, where I can bring you what, put hundreds of pictures where close calls on a CD for you. I would be able to print over a hundred pictures, but I can put it on a CD if no one has no time to come out.
Well, we'll make time, we'll have somebody come out and take a look at it.
And then...
They wrote it down, and we're going to have somebody take a look at it and see what we can do with the revenue.
Because like I said, too many close calls, and like I said, that's because you have two schools letting out at the same location.
You say they have cones there already, you're using the...
That's for Comstock Street, yeah, yes.
So you're saying the cone thing would be a good idea on the, on the other streets, and we, we can solve... So you're saying the cone thing would be a good idea on the, on the other streets and we, we saw the same, same purpose that they do on Comstock Street?
Yeah, yes, where, where it says, okay, how they have this sign there, buses only.
We will, we will have somebody take a look at that.
Like I said, I have some pictures here, and then another thing I would like to speak on that maybe help, also help too. I believe that was last Friday, Friday, when we were getting this storm, and it was raining so, so bad. That was where I did see a police officer. He was dri, I didn't get a chance to get his name, but he was driving car 940, where I wanna give him a good compliment where he did volunteer, how he parked his car right, right there, and wow, how it seemed to be much safer. So even if it's not the cones, what, maybe you can have a police car. Once everybody sees the lights, they slow down.
Okay, okay.
So like I give him a compliment, maybe he knows which officer it was, but yes, it, it was a good idea.
He's gonna say it was him.
Well, like I said, I don't know if you identify with card, card number that they, that they do have.
Yes, sir.
So like I said, here are some samples of some pictures to show. And I, like I said, I hope someone can take care of it soon. But like I said, I pray the crossing guard, well, he doesn't have a heart attack, running from one, no, no, running back and forth trying to save everybody. So I hope this is not a delay on this, that you can help as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, you know, I was there, there were two crossing guards in Comstock.
There was two total?
And I, there were two on Comstock. When I was there, there was two on Comstock.
Yes, there's two.
And one on Delavan.
No, it's two now. It's been two crossing guards on, uh-huh, yes. That's been, beginning of the school year, it's been like that. But like I said, as you can see, even with two at that location, like I said, where you have Livingston letting out there, you have Brayshaw letting out there, where two crossing guards are not good enough there.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, once again, Charles Cradaville. New Brunswick, I'll guess right off the top, paid sick leave. When, when can we expect paid sick leave?
Uh, we're still, we're still hammering it out, Mr. Cradaville. I can't give you a timeline on it. Can't give you a timeline at this time.
Still working with U D Square.
Still working with U D Square, still working with the mayor's office. Probably are trying to get there.
Can you tell me what the holdup is?
Everybody has a different opinion, and we're trying to get some data and facts from other towns that have it. And I think that's about it, really. Trying to put it all together.
By Christmas, by the end of the year, should we? You have paid sick leave, like ten, you had the chance to be the first, and now you're gonna be like the tenth. I thought you said before you wanted New Brunswick to be a trendsetter, but on this issue, we're taking our sweet time.
We do like to be on the forefront, but I think we also wanna be sure and be right, and there's people that have concerns on both sides of the question, and we wanna be fair to everybody. So to do that, we wanna take our time. We wanna evaluate everything. We wanna put something together that's meaningful and is the right for everybody in the city of New Brunswick.
Okay, um, I, I, I think the citizens deserve better.
Okay.
I, I wanna ask, does the city regret canceling Cyclovia this weekend?
Does it, do they regret it?
Yeah, I mean, there was no storm.
The city, the city actually doesn't have feelings. It's a body, you know, it's not, it's, it's a building. I don't know if it has emotions.
But, well, who made the decision?
I don't, I, Ms. Ratchell, can you respond to that, please?
Cancelled Cyclovia based on the information, the best information we had at the time on Friday. We heard from some of our EMS teams who were expecting that they were gonna have a busy weekend ahead of them. Some of our partners and sponsors expressed that they were reluctant to hold the event. We weren't sure what was gonna happen. I myself was very upset on Sunday when I saw the beautiful weather and how wonderful it would've been. So were we happy about it? No, but it ended up happening. We're gonna do another one in the spring. We're gonna keep doing it, but that is, that is unfortunately what happened.
I wanna ask, did the emergency management council have a meeting about the hurricane? Did they, did they get together?
Absolutely. Director Ross, we were prepared. Yes, sir, thank you.
Okay. Can you tell me, did the emergency management council get together yesterday when there was a power outage at 25 Kirkpatrick Street?
Uh, did you get together when there was a power outage at 25 Kirkpatrick Street? No, no, like I said.
Oh, okay, and can you tell me, were the New Brunswick Police or the planning department or any of the other agencies that are housed at 25 Kirkpatrick Street affected by that power outage?
Was there people affected by a power outage? 25 Kirkpatrick Street. Mr., I'm sorry, Captain?
I emailed him, so he knows the answer. The fire was not affected at all.
Okay, thank you.
How about, how about?
We have a backup system.
How about the other departments?
How about the other departments? Can anybody?
Municipal court?
Municipal court?
Specific to engineering, we were out of power for about an hour and a half. We are not considered, we're not on emergency service.
Okay.
And the municipal court, hour and a half, or?
Municipal court was recessed and convened again when the power was died down. Thank you.
So, so an hour and a half, power was out from.
Okay.
Okay, I'm just concerned because this building is, is not super old. It's fourteen years old. It's, uh, basically privatized. It was privately built. Uh, and we also had a huge explosion with an underground transformer at the same general area right there, 25 Kirkpatrick Street, this summer. So I'm concerned, was the electrical work done there substandard? Why are there electrical problems in this building that's only fourteen years old and supposedly top of the line?
Um, any, anything could happen with electricity, Mr. Cradaville, as, as, maybe as you don't know, obviously. So if we could predict, you know, when a transformer is going to blow, and when there's gonna be a power outage, the simplest thing, it's quite a, a power line, the littlest things can cause a power line to go down or to lose power. It, it happens all over the place.
Okay, well, I wanna thank Captain Miller for getting back to me and clearing up. It didn't affect the police operations, but when I asked the city, you know, the mayor's office spokesperson, they, I was directed to ask Keating. And can you tell me who Keating is? Is that, that's the company that built the building?
Uh, yeah, we believe he's the operator of the building. They, they own the building, and I believe it's, uh,
It was a building manager.
Building manager, the manager of the building, that's right.
Okay, and maybe you can ask Mr. Hamilton. Is the Keating company connected to John Lynch, the former mayor?
I have a good problem with Mr. Hamilton. His answer was kind of a little idea.
It's not a cousin of John Lynch, Keating?
I don't know. He has no idea, sir.
He said he has no idea, okay. So there was also a problem today at the sheriff's office. Was the emergency management council, did they convene over that? There was a suspicious package. The state bomb squad was brought in.
That was handled by the state. That was handled by the state.
That was handled by the state, sir.
Okay, so the emergency management council hasn't gotten together since, like, the weekend when they talked about the hurricane?
That sounds about right to me. Yes, I'll check.
Um, can I ask the taxi council in New Brunswick, they have, when was the last time they had a successful meeting? What's going on there?
Taxi council? Is anybody here, yes, Mr. Shannon?
I believe they had a meeting this afternoon. I know Mr. Hamilton was in attendance as to how many people were there. I'm not aware. I wasn't there.
They had a meeting this afternoon, sir?
Only one member showed up to the meeting.
Oh, you were there?
I was there, so.
What are you asking me to do? So, I'm just asking.
I figured you guys would.
You really, you really want to eat up in five minutes. Come on, Mr. Cradaville, why?
The five-minute rule actually forces me to ask questions. It's very short, so, so that's, that's why we're where we are here.
Oh, okay, alright.
So, uh.
It's never your fault. Come on, let's move on.
The ethics board, when are they gonna meet next?
Fifteenth of October, sir.
Fifteenth of October, Margaret Gallanters. Uh, human relations commission, when was the last time they had a meeting?
Is anybody here from the human relations commission? Yes, Mr. Blevins?
I believe the last meeting was in June. I don't have the exact date. You know, I wasn't expecting to have a question.
What did happen on that meeting?
It's scheduled for sometime in October, but I don't remember the exact dating again.
Okay, can you please promise me that it'll be publicized, unlike the?
Mr. Blevins, can you please publicize? So everybody here, the chambers here, can we please publicize the next meeting, please? Thank you.
Thank you. Another board I wanna ask about probably hasn't had a meeting in a long time, the cable TV advisory committee. Has, is, are they doing anything?
Uh, yes, Ms. Ratchell.
They have not been in quite a while.
Not been?
We don't have any meetings scheduled presently.
Nothing scheduled presently?
No.
I would suggest the board schedule a meeting because Cable Vision has been sold to a different company, an international company, and there's probably, it's probably a smart time for us to look into that. Also, when are these meetings gonna be on television?
Are our meetings not televised?
Yeah.
Uh, not anytime soon. There's been no discussion on that, sir.
Pretty sure when you bought a new system for the technology, you've said that that was possible, and you were looking into it, the city.
Ms. Ratchell, this is. We did say it was possible. Um, the channel is not currently on the air right now. As I'm sure you know, we are still working on getting back up on the air, um, which is taking longer than I had hoped, but it's not completely off the table, but I don't have a timeline as to when they are or if they will be televised.
Okay, uh, I also wanted to share the sentiments expressed by Councilman Anderson about Mr. Blackwell on, on his retirement, and I wanted to ask, has the city found a new person to replace him yet?
Yes, uh, we just received, were notified that Ed Spencer will be the, the new superintendent of the recreation department.
And you don't think that's a conflict of interest that he works for the school board? Or that he's on the school board?
Uh, one's in elected position and one is a appointed position, so not, I think there's a conflict.
Okay, I mean, that's, maybe we, maybe we disagree.
Certainly within his legal right to do that, and so I don't think that's a problem. I, maybe I would think it'd be a plus.
Okay, was he the best person for the job?
Uh, I don't know. I wasn't involved in the interview process, but I, I would assume that he was. He's worked there for years. Mr. Spencer's a terrific guy. Whoever doesn't know him, he's a, gets along in the community well with everybody. Can't say enough good things about him. Uh, but I, like I said, I was not part of the interview process. But I, I hope he, I would say we hired the best guy, absolutely.
Okay, when did he start?
Uh, who can tell me the actual start date?
Monday.
Monday?
Last Monday.
Last Monday.
Just past Monday.
Just past Monday. Thank you.
Okay, so we were without a recreation director for a little over a month. How, how's things going with finding a new city engineer?
Moving along.
Moving along. We're moving along.
Are we gonna be without a city engineer come January 1st, or we expect to?
That is not our plan.
It's not the plan. We're certainly trying to get there.
Okay, and now I have to also ask about the housing authority. Uh, I wanna know, um, what's going on with the housing authority? Like, only four members showed up to the last meeting. They haven't been able to pass their minutes from July. Uh, they now are on their second chairperson in, in a short time. Um, and I hear that they've hired Kevin Jones's nephew to work for the housing authority. Is that how this is supposed to work, where the board members get their relatives hired, um, and where only four people show up to the meetings when there's seven members supposed to be there? What's going on?
Uh, well, I don't know if everything, I, I don't know. Who can help me answer these questions? Uh, have you been to a housing authority meeting?
I went to the most recent one, September 23rd.
Did you ask the same questions?
Uh, yeah, I asked, but they refused to answer whether Kevin Jones's nephew was hired, so I'd like to know, was Kevin Jones's nephew hired by the, your brother, the housing authority, through the charity liaison for the?
First, let me bless this, sir, how to, God bless. Does anybody know, is anybody here from the housing authority? Can anybody answer the question? I mean, those are questions for the housing authority, and I couldn't tell you why they wouldn't answer the question. Have you contacted the mayor's office?
Uh, not on that point, no.
Okay, well, I would contact the mayor's office.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can you, can you ask the mayor's office representative who's here tonight?
Ms. Ratchell, do you have that?
I do have that information right now.
Okay, she doesn't have that information?
I've addressed that question.
Mr. Cradaville, time up?
Yes, sir.
Do you have any more, Mr. Cradaville? I don't, I don't wanna slay you.
One final, one final plea. I would ask that every member of the council consider attending the New Brunswick Housing Authority board meetings. I know there's a liaison.
Yeah, I know I wasn't there because I gotta work, but I usually be there, but I do receive, you know, updates, and I do receive the, the information that I need in order to answer any questions. And, and I just wanna say that it's unusual that they're not there, because they usually are very, all of them are there, and they're able to handle business. So there must be something unusual, uh, because that doesn't happen often.
Yeah, so I would encourage you to go and investigate what's going on there. Um, it's lonely when I'm there by myself, so if you.
The only one there the last time is that, so.
I've been to multiple meetings.
I see the whole people know you in those meetings.
Well, every time I'm there, it's only, it's only me and the New Brunswick locals that show up at the housing authority, and I think you should, you should investigate specifically what's going on on Zebra Way. There's a piece of land there, and the housing authority's not really clear about who owned it very recently. Does anybody know about Zebra Way, this piece of land?
No, sir.
Okay, that's what you should look into and investigate.
Thank you, Mr. Cradaville. Anybody else that can address the council seat? Yes, Mr. Solano?
Um, I just wanna address the, my organization is a profit. It is a nonprofit, and I submitted a paper work with my applications since 1991, and every year I request anything, I submitted with it. And I'm very, very tired of you blaming me for anything that I don't do or anything that I don't deserve. Mr. Locken knows that we've been in the city for more than 25 years, and it really, really, really gets me upset that he says in record that my organization is for profit. It's not for profit. It's nonprofit. I don't ask anybody for money. See?
I don't ask for money. Can you ask your question, guys? Excuse me. If it's not for profit, Mr. Solano, then how are you able to pay for overtime and pay for the lights to go on?
Because we have funding. Every kid that plays soccer is three dollars. Every adult that plays soccer is five dollars. How many members do we have? We have over 3,000 members in our organization. We're not new. We've been doing this for 23 years.
Well, when, when, when you had a meeting with Mr. Locken, and he told you the hours that you could have, you said that was okay, then why do you wanna renege on the agreement?
That's what I wanna address, Mr. Egan.
Okay.
We had a meeting.
Okay.
A friendly meeting.
Okay.
And yes, I accepted it, but I requested it, if they can be, instead of eight to four, if they can be 12 to eight, or 10 to six, or two to 10. We would like to play under the lights. That's a, that's a, that's a, that's a great stadium that we're playing. And they told me go play if we figure out next week. And when I played the first week in April, everything was fine. We paid the money. We paid the money because we, we almost paid. We don't, I don't like to get anything for free. All this time, I paid over $10,000 using all the facilities. And for the last three years, I haven't used any facilities because they've been receiving all the time, and I never complained. I'm not here to complain. I'm here to ask for your help. Everybody's here. But they always trying to make me look like I'm a person that always asking for that, something that I don't deserve. We had a meeting, and he said we'll look into it. Okay, so we went and played Sunday. Now, the second week, we requested again. I called him, I called Mr. Montanez, I called, can you please give me the hours from 12 to 10 or, or 10 to 6? I don't even say hours. They have a guy there Monday through Saturdays or Monday through Sunday, eight to four. But they have a guy at the stadium Monday, Monday through Friday, 3 to 11, all the lights are on. And the guy's there just sitting up there without, without the lights. Nobody can go on the track because it's dark. Doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense, and everybody knows that. Every day, they have a guy at 3 to 11 with all the lights off. Nobody can use the track. That doesn't make sense, wasting that money instead of me paying the money for overtime?
So, so there's a guy here who's saying from 3 to 11?
Yes, Mr. 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 Jeff Junior, he's there 3 to 11, Monday through Friday, full-time job. What does he does?
I don't, I don't.
The lights are off, and he's just there sitting in the dark. I went there last night. I went there Monday, went there Tuesday to say hi. See? Nobody's on the track, why? Because it's dark.
There's no reason for him to be in the dark when, when the approval we give to Mr. Solano ends at 4:00 p.m.
Yeah, but we had a meeting.
You know, it's in the dark.
And we asked.
We're not wasting our money. We have just put $2, $3 million into the track and the football field. It is true, Mr. Solano asked us to consider 12 noon to 8:00 p.m., an eight-hour block of time on Sunday. We told him we would do that. It was only a week after the meeting in prep, as we're all getting prepped for a hurricane, that he was demanding more time on Sunday. Your own letter here says you want 13 hours now. No one's blaming you for anything, but just we're, we're asking you to follow the rules that we think aren't working.
Let's try to, let's try to see what's working. So you, you would, you're permitting him to do a, a later start, 12 to 8?
We said we would, we would consider it. Mike Montanez, the recreation department, and I have not had a chance to do that yet. This, this field's been open for two weeks.
It was, and I was sent to her, and I even, I even had it.
So, you, you not realize, the, the field is brand-new. It's really for the New Brunswick High School Athletic Program.
I was saying, yes.
And they said they would be flexible with the hours, but they only wanna give you, they only wanna give you the eight hours. That's the only, that's the only time they want for soccer time. And they go give you some time so you can play under the lights. Now, see the agreement that you made when you said, okay? Now, is the agreement that you made, when you said, okay, anyway, so don't, so maybe next year, or next soccer season, you can revisit it, and we could, we could negotiate more hours. But you, you agreed to what they...
I agree with the eight hours. It's fine. That, that's because it's a brand-new stadium, blah, blah, blah. I agree with it, okay. So, what about doing after, you know, after hours? Would be 10:6, would be 10:8? Can we, can you guys let us use the light? I mean, we play there. It looks so wonderful, professional playing soccer. I mean, we play soccer. We play soccer. That's what we do.
Is the issue, though, is it about the hours, or is it about the usage of the field? Because, you know, because it's a brand-new stadium, and AstroTurf, I know turf has a certain shelf light to it, has a certain light to it, as far as how much you use it. Now, the high school uses it, correct? You got the high school football?
And soccer.
High school soccer. What about the popcorn? What about the...
They will use it next year.
We'll use it next, so they can't even, they're not even using it this year.
They, only because they can't, they schedule their games...
Right, that's what I'm saying. They're not using it this year, but that wouldn't even been an issue on Sundays, because they would have had a certain block on Sundays.
Sure, we give them, they deserve consideration.
Right. But, so it's more so, is it more so about, it's more so about the usage and the life of the field, correct?
It's both, it's both, yes. We have a, we have a gentleman who works eight hours on Sunday, and, and why can't we tell him he can go home at 4:00 P.M. when the, when the activities at the field are over with? Why do we have to tell him he's got to stay till 12:00 midnight and clean up after 13 hours of soccer, and, you know, turn the lights off, we'll see you tomorrow? What's wrong with us allowing him to go home at 4:00, at 4:00 P.M.? I mean, these are not rules that I just make up. They are a, a policy that recreation and the Parks Department thinks is, is reasonable, and I agree with them.
I just have, the other thing that concerns me, we were just saying that for tomorrow and next year, it's gonna be, you know, how is this gonna affect the local kids also? That's gonna be another thing that we have to be ready for, because he cannot have it every Sunday. So, is that what it creates?
It's gonna get even more complicated when the court order comes back. No question about it.
We have to refer to everybody.
I'm not here to override Mr. Lockwood's decision or Mr. Thomas's, yes. You know, it is what it is. I give it to you guys, because you guys manage the city. Yes, it's true. I asked for more hours, 8:00 to 9:00. If it's not possible, at least give me a chance to play under the lights 10:06. Okay, I spoke with the guy who works there Monday through Sunday, and I asked him, if he's willing to work overtime. I paid him $40 an hour. I paid him $80 an hour, and he wants, you know, and he said, yeah, I'm happy to play overtime, yeah. You know, the thing for us, I never, never complain about paying. You know, my budget in soccer with the, with the club is $270,000 a year. I pay, I pay the mortgage, I pay taxes, and this is what I do. This is what I do for the community. I mean, the kids are from New Brunswick, the people are from New Brunswick. Yes, we have some people out of, out of New Brunswick, the Skyway Hall and Party. And that's why I need more hours. But if we don't need more hours, the eight hours, can you give it to me 10:06, 12:8?
He said, he said, he said you have to consider it.
Yeah, you know, and, and he said it at the beginning of the meeting when we met him. And I'm here now, if you can help us, you know, I don't want him to override, you know, override his, his decision. I just ask him for help. I mean, how hard is it?
Let him face the fear. He's just trying to support the policy that recreation and the Parks Department have established for this field.
Do you know how much I pay the family for using the turf? I pay $27,000 a year. Can we get that money to New Brunswick? Yes, I'm willing to pay that $27,000 a year. We play Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. I'm afraid to spend that money. It's not my money. It's not my money. It's, it's the guys' money that we pay. Every coast volunteer. We do car wash. How much we do last week in our car wash? We did it on Friday, even though it was raining, we did it.
You're fine. You agreed to the eight-hour thing. It's a brand-new field. That's all they're giving you right now. They're trying to be flexible on the time. That's what, that's what they, that's what they...
If you can help me, do 10:06 and 12:8, I would really appreciate it.
Okay, we're gonna work on that. Yes.
I just want to say something real quick. I think that there's a policy already in place. We should have to follow it now. I don't think this is a question about money. It's a question about the life of the field, and, and coming older, you know, next year you're gonna be here probably saying, okay, these people have it, you know, I want to have it. I've been having it for 25 years. So, we have to be open also to all the people using it at this time. And I just want to caution you, talking to a staff person, it really concerns me that you're going to a staff to ask them about if they're willing to work overtime or not, because they don't have the, the capacity or the authority to say, yeah, work overtime. They have a supervisor. There's a director of that, of that program, of that entity division that makes the decision. It's not the employee. So, I think that's a little bit disrespectful to, to the people that are...
Yeah, I know. I want to just let you know that I'm very, my, Brian has had his capacity to understand. First of all, he mentioned about the guy staying overtime until 12:00. If he's willing to stay, we pay. If he's not willing to stay, you know, it's fine. We get somebody else. There's a lot of people that work in the city. Okay, I agree with that. Okay. They're just trying to block me. They're just trying to block me. It's, but it's fine, you know, but don't try to tell me that this cannot be done, because this, this, this guy cannot be done. I have a relationship with all the Parks guys, you know, why? Because I get an overhead one. This is me. I've been in the city for more than 30 years. So, I spoke with him, I say, Danny, would you like to, I mean, why don't you do more hours? He said, oh, yeah, I stay overtime. I only do 40 hours. Okay?
It's not like a question of, it's the lights, it's the 300 hours in the turf field before you have to redo the stuff, the, the machines and everything else like that. So, there's a lot of things that's basically, other than just have to understand.
That's it, Mr. Times Officer Solano. Thank you.
If you're willing to help me, just the hour, if you're not, you know, you can make it. I mean, 8:04, we cannot win this.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
And you will, the, the, you know, New Brunswick?
My concern with the, with the park, I mean, with the crossing cars and all that. If you look at your two Cs, there's a law, when you got flashing lights during school hours, there's only 15 miles to 20 miles per hour. That's, that's one. That's a law. It's in the books. A distracted driver that overvalves that's supposed to get a ticket. Because on Redman, Redman Street and Commercial Avenue, I got hit by a car during 50 miles an hour in a bike lane. The officer rode it up like I was going. And I'm like, the thing says 25 miles an hour, the lights are blinking. The law says you're supposed to pay attention to that. Then they had construction signs up saying, construction is going on on Sedan Street, construction is going on on Georgia Road at the same time. There was no crossing guard here. There was not even a safety patrol officer crossing the kids across the street. The cop is writing up a thing while kids almost got hit by a car. Then he rode it up like I was going, and I got pictures to prove that. That's one. But in North Brunswick, they use their two Cs. Once a couple people start getting tickets and they start to realize not to be speeding that time of morning, then you won't get overworked, because there is a law with that. And the second, getting back to what Charlie was saying with Reverend Jones, I'm glad to find out he's a commissioner now. See how they took four months, you know, how they took four months to take innocent people and turn them into guilty people, because he's on the, he's the commissioner of the pendulum. So, I just want to throw that out there, and I'm still working on that, and I'll get back with y'all on it. Y'all have a good night. Oh, yeah, Reverend Moses said, thanks for coming to his funeral.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council this evening? Yes, sir.
Good evening. Roger Georges, 101 St. Victory Taxi, New Brunswick. In 1946, the city gave 40 licenses to the boys who came back from the war, and they started cab companies in New Brunswick. And it was a marvelous thing that the city did, and the roots go back to big families in the city, fathers of the cities. And Mr. Joe Egan was on top of that. We have worked hours and hours with Mr. Hamilton, Mr. Teresi, Mr. Shami, Captain Miller, Captain Milligan before. We had a lot of dilemmas in the taxi industry due to some illegal taxi activities in the area, and New Brunswick became very attractive to run illegal taxi industry. We worked hard with the city hand in hand. We created some tough ordinance to be applied. They worked for the wild, but then unfortunately, it was like a wildfire. The police department couldn't catch up with it. They would take 50 off the road, another 100 would pop out somewhere else, until other municipalities around New Brunswick started giving licenses. I'll give an example. For example, Miltown gave 40 licenses for one square mile town, and we worked with Miltown, and they got rid of that. But again, we couldn't stop it. The city councils did what they could, you know, with the police department for years, and I believe it's been 15 years now with this dilemma. And little by little, we made a living, you know. We're talking about, about 150 drivers. They represent 150 families in the city. And to put the icing on the cake, now we have Uber. I mean, you all heard about Uber. It's a nationwide, or, you know, business. They're taking, anybody can be a taxi driver. Anybody can pick up a fare with their regular cars, and, you know, I'm sure you heard about it. So, now, we're on the floor bleeding. We cannot keep up with our bills. We cannot keep up with our insurance bills, our repairs, even though the police department knows we're trying, you know, we're fixing our cabs regularly. We're being inspected four times a year, and, but we're not making it. We're here tonight to seek your help, in any way to come up with an emergency plan to help us, because most of us are ready to give back their licenses and look for some other job. And they're here from Yellow Cab, Old Brunswick, Old Nation, you know, George Mukarzal, my partner, Mr. Shai from Old Brunswick, Mr. George Boumasour from Old Brunswick, Mr. Louis Antisi from Victory Taxi, Norman Alzi from Yellow Cab. And we met today to answer Charlie, Wilshott. We met today, but we didn't inform the corps for the taxi committee, Mr. Hamilton and Mr. Teresi. We're trying to seek your help. We have no other where to go, you know. The city and us, we have to come up with a plan to help us. As I said, we're on the floor bleeding. By the minute we lose in living, and we're going like we're in intensive care now. I'll give you some ideas, if you may accept. Some other towns, they enforce their ordinance very tough, like, let's say, Newark Airport. They're not letting Uber to come inside the terminal and pick up. They're forcing them to stay in the parking lot and make them work harder. Here in New Brunswick, they come and line up in our taxi stand, and we cannot come up to them and fight with them. We don't want to do that. Also, that's, that's related to Uber, on the illegal cabs. There are cabs that they are not licensed from other municipalities. They have Pennsylvania license plate, North Carolina license plate, Washington State license plate. They roam the city, you know, by laundromats, by supermarkets, and they, they take away business from us. So, if we can apply some more enforcement on them, every little thing help. Another idea also, if you can help us with, is to cut down our bills, you know. Our insurance bill is very high. It's almost $8,000 per cab, and it's a $100,000 coverage. The state requires $35,000. If we can go by the state requirements, that would be appreciated. Also, when the days were good and we were making okay money, the city come up with an idea to have the cabs to be six years or younger, or newer. If you can give us a small break, we promise we keep them in good shape, and as I said, regulated by the police department, to give us a chance to have them 10 years instead of six years. That would give us a small push to stay alive. And I'll give you an idea also, not an idea, like, any business from 12 years till now, I guarantee that increased their service or their prices by at least 10%. New Jersey Transit, they already, and speaking of the transportation business, as us, they increased their fares three times every five years by 25%. If you check the city ordinance for our fares, they haven't increased a penny since 2003. And that's 12 years. 12 years we haven't increased a penny. And not because we don't want, because we seeing what's going on. And, you know, our expenses increased, insurance increased, mechanical repair increased, cost of living, starting from a pencil to a building, everything increased. And I'm not trying to, you know, offend anybody. Even our taxi license renewal fee increased from $275, Mr. Teresi, to $375, or $250 to $375. So, it's almost 50%. And I'm not against this, but just to give you an idea how things are growing, and we're shrinking, and we're almost disappearing. I hate to see this legacy end. On your time, or on my time, they started it almost 75 years ago. I'm seeking your help to come up with an emergency plan to help us, please, and give my colleagues some peace of mind that we can continue making a living for us and our family, and servicing the public in New Brunswick. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. So, if you know that, we will certainly get on the enforcement part as far as the licenses and people that are not registered with the state of New Jersey. We'll have the police looking to get a little more involved with enforcement if you say they're out there. But I, I do realize your point. I, I, every place I travel to, even I read articles in New York City, you know, Uber is coming a, is coming a big thing, and I'm sure it's affecting your, your livelihood. All I can say at this point is that we wrote down everything that you asked about, and we will certainly take everything you said under advisement, and we'll, I'll certainly talk to some people and see what we can do, what we can't do. We'll get a consensus from the council on where we want to go, but we'll certainly try our best to help you.
Thank you, Mr. Egan.
Yeah. Which, which parts you talking about lining up their?
Oh, like designated taxi stands.
By the railroad, by St. Peters?
Yes, because what happened, people was text their Uber service while they're coming on the train, and where else they gonna meet them?
Isn't that specifically...
It's specifically to the, to the taxi.
The police who enforce that a little bit.
Yes.
Plus, they have a private car. They don't know who the private car, with...
Private car, private car, yeah. It's tough to, it's tough to find them, it's tough to, for the police to enforce it, because they don't know who's Uber or not. It could be any car, it could be any car, though. I mean, it's not...
No, that can go through the phone, through the website, and that can find who's every car parked.
Who can?
Any, any car. Anybody can find who Uber parked. That can go to the website on the phone, because that can find out which each car parked. If it's private car...
Cabs, are you familiar with cabs?
I'm not familiar with the website. I agree 100% to me. The unlicensed cabs have been a problem for years. I think we work together very well with the enforcement. Every illegal cab we take off the street, five more come.
Yeah, I would say every day.
They caught on to our sting operations we were dealing with them, so they took all the labeling off their hands. And then, you know, it's almost impossible to find. We can get more educated on Uber, but to take a police officer full-time and monitor a computer to see where Uber cars are going, that's not the best way to utilize our resources either. So, you know, we're gonna have to try to find a happy ending.
Exactly. Yes.
We're gonna, like you said, we're gonna work on the enforcement from all sides, but I just have to suggest also, because a lot of times, a lot of people that I talk to, and I know people, they'll call cabs out of town, and they say, well, they're getting better customer service. And for a point, I'm gonna give you two personal points. My mother, like a year and a half ago, about, not even a year and a half ago, she used one of New Brunswick's local cabs, because she's been here all her life. She was used to using the local cabs. She got in the car, she went out of town. The price that the guy gave her wasn't the price when he got there. When she went to go talk to him about it, he cursed her out. So, she calls me up, and I had to go down first, you know, she calls me up. I had to go down, and I talked at first, and they denied it. And then I said, well, I'll tell you what. Then I had to tell them exactly, you know, I said, I'll tell you what. If I don't talk to this person, then the person came down, then they admitted to what they had done. Now, would I call them up again? Would I tell my mother to use that again? I wouldn't tell her to do that again, because you have to work on it from all sides. One night, I called the cab. I get in the car, I asked the guy, I said, okay, I'm going out here. How much is it gonna be? He said, oh, I don't speak English. I said, oh, really? I said, you don't speak English? I said, well, how about this? Like, once again, I had to identify. Then all of a sudden, he spoke English at that point. You know, I mean, so, it has to come from all sides. We have to give them a reason. There's a reason why sometimes people are calling out-of-town cabs. I mean, I'm not saying all are bad, but a few bad ones, what, a few bad ones are gonna make people do that, and that increases, you have to make people want to have the competition with others. That's why they do that sometimes. You know, I see it from all sides. I, it's not something I heard, it's something that I experienced personally twice. Yeah.
Also, they, if they come from out of town with a private plate?
No, 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 no. This was a... No, 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 this was a, a New Brunswick cab.
Okay, New Brunswick, you say like, like, prefer to call cab from out of-
No, that's what, no, what I'm saying, there's a reason why they-
He said there's a reason.
There's a reason why they, somebody just doesn't pick up the phone and say, I'm gonna call this out of town cab. You know, there's a reason why they would say, if you get bad customer service in, for one area, then you're not gonna call, you're not gonna go back to that again.
Thank you, this is, you gotta come back up to the microphone. Your time has elapsed, sir, but it's okay.
No, I, I have to answer, Mr. Egan. You know, the mayor, the mayor also came up with a remedy to these complaints, formed the committee and I happen to be the chairman of it for all the citizen complaints. And lately, things, I mean, I'm not saying cab drivers are monks, they're, you know, they, they make mistakes, they, they charged Mr. Egan once double going to New York. So, so, you know, it, it happens, you know, and we, we do take care of these things, you know, even, you know, the most sacred organization, they make those mistakes. And then they said, the language barrier with the Span, Latino community, it turned out not to be the language barrier because we did not have one incident that somebody got lost because of the language barrier. You know, half of Victory Taxi, they speak Spanish and, you know, they're fluent in the Spanish language. So they always make excuses and especially, you know, the out-of-town cabs to come to New Brunswick and, but unfortunately fifteen years, they already created a clientele, you know? It's not like fifteen days or fifteen weeks, it's fifteen years, you know? So that's why we need, like you said, little help from here, little help from there, just to get us back on our feet. Thank you.